We couldn't have taken action on it because it wasn't.
I got a call about that.
Good evening, everyone. We'll call the meeting to order. Rebecca, would you please call the roll?
Flornoy.
Here.
Howley.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Gandy.
Yes.
Rasmussen.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Toohill.
Yes.
Thanks. Well, we've got a room, I think, that's workable. It's a little bit of an echo in here. We need some wall coverings or something. But, counsel, any additions or changes to the seating's agenda? Yeah, we'll move to our consent agenda. Tonight, we have approval of the minutes from the July 22 council meeting, approval of payroll from July 26 of $123,498.58, approval of the August 9 payroll of $125,971, approval of the USDA Step 1 debt in the amount of $12,975, approval of the co-bank interim financing debt in the amount of $42,336.52. We have approval of the June finance report, acceptance of the Wayfinding Commission minutes, and a resolution of employment in the water department with approval of a liquor license for the Depot Brewery and Amore Mio, approval of claims in the amount of $771,905.36, of which your claims above $75,000 would be Alliant Energy, $86,430.6, D.C. Concrete and Construction, $95,715.35, and Drish Construction at $111,549. Any questions, counsel, regarding those consent agenda items? Not entertain a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Anderson.
Second.
Second by Thompson. Please call the roll.
Anderson.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Gandy.
Yes.
Toohill.
Yes.
Howley.
Yes.
Flornoy.
Yes.
Rasmussen.
Yes.
Thank you. Miss Counsel, we'll receive from our fire chief the annual fire rescue report. Chief, you could identify the officers with you, too. I didn't see it either.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay.
Everyone's got a copy?
Yes.
Yes.
Everyone does have it. Okay. I'm not going to have to do a whole lot of talking because the reports we generate on the computer gave you pretty much all the numbers. One of the new things this year is the medical response that we started a year ago. You'll see the numbers there, 1,006 calls that we answered on top of the 267 fire calls. So, and that's just 911 calls. That's not transfers. That's just regular 911 calls. I want to bring attention to some of the guys that are here with me because for them to get trained to the EMT level took six months of training. And they did that all, especially Brad and Mark came in. They're full-time anyways with us. They came back in on days off and stuff and Tuesdays and Thursday nights, anywhere from four to six hours a night, is that right? To get the training that they needed for this and then do the testing to give us the ability to help Midwest answer calls in our town. And Bob, you know, one of our volunteers, you know, same thing. You know, he gave up that six months to get trained. There is five other members that got trained for a total of eight that we have right now with another one getting ready to test. So we'll have over half the department EMT certified. And I believe we're talking another class this fall possibly, whether it be EMT or first responder. So I think they've been a big help, not only with the ambulance, but it's allowed the police department, the officers. A lot of times, they would go to a lot of the medical calls. It's freed them up to be able to do the police work, but yet they're still available if the call is bad enough that we need extra help. I've got a breakdown of all the fire calls. If anybody has any questions. The training that we do, you will see 37 hours of training. We're required to do 24 hours as a department, so we go above and beyond that with training. That's each guy, 37 hours. This year, we got grain bin rescue training in. We got high-angle rope rescue training in. Those are specialty trainings that we actually have to take a weekend out of our time to do. It's not just a Wednesday night where we do a couple hours. We have to have specialized instructors come in and teach those. We're always working on vehicle extrication training for the car accidents that we go to. We try and do those once or twice a year. And then we try and get the boat out onto Bonnefield Lake for water rescue if that's needed. So gives you a little bit. Winter Fire School, we've got guys that go up to Ames for a weekend and take specialized training. So those are some of the classes that they took there with the ice rescue. And we will be getting this year a couple of ice suits through the lost money. So we'll be able to provide that level of service, too, that we've not been able to do before during the winter.
Scott, can I ask about, on the fire calls, what would a hazmat emergency entail? It's like you have quite a number of those, 36.
There's a large, Brad does all the reports on that.
That's anywhere from a gas leak to a spill of some sort.
Antifreeze.
Okay.
You know, there's a whole broad spectrum of what is considered hazmat. It's not that where you see every one of the
You don't have to put the suit on.
Level A suits and everything.
Yeah, luckily we haven't had a tumbletum over for anything we've had this year anyway, or this last year. They're really good. I know we had one several years ago on 34, and we called them up, and they responded. But they're like, "Yeah, you're good with regular fire gear." Once we told them what it was, and just went in with air packs and picked the barrel up.
So if you had a car accident and the gas tank ruptured and spilled some gas, that would be included in that number there?
Yeah.
And we're trained at the ops level of hazmat so we can get there and we can contain the situation. If it's something that requires a long, drawn-out cleanup or whatever, that's what we have contracted with the TMA that the county pays for each year for their hazmat response team to come over and assist us.
Chief, the EMT call attendance, there's a difference in the number for the different firefighters. Is that because of their amount of time they spend at the station?
Say that again.
When you're looking at the EMT call attendance, there's a difference in the number of calls the different firefighters attend to? Is that because of the different amount of time, amount of time they spend out there at the station?
Correct. The 316, the 358, and the 291 are the full-time drivers. So they're obviously going to get the bulk of the calls. The other EMTs are volunteers, so they don't have to go to the calls. Those are just the calls that they went to. There's a lot of calls that we get that you know right away by the tone of the call, they probably are going to be good. Then you get the calls that you know, "Hey, they're probably going to need an extra hand." So some of these, some of the volunteers like Bob will actually leave from home or work and give that extra help if needed. One thing that we have strived to do over the year, we always have someone at the station. That's been our, we have what's called the swarm method. We've got a driver full-time at the station 24/7. And whenever one of these guys goes out on a medical call, if it's Monday through Friday, 8 to 4:30, I automatically go and I back up the station, and I'm there for another call. If it's after 4:30, when I'm done working, the drivers, if they're on duty the next day, will come in. And that station's always covered during a medical call. And if there's some reason one of them can't make it, I can't make it, we've got backup drivers that are EMTs that we can call and say, "Hey, can you cover for, you know, two hours while I run to Iowa City?" So that's one of the key things that we've strived to do. And I think we've done a really good job is always having somebody at that station just in case something else comes up.
But Chief, I think it's really impressive what you've done in preparation over this last year. And congratulations to all of you, and thank you for the time that you've put in. It really does make our community safer and our emergency response full and meaningful for those people who need it. So, thank you.
Hey, Scott, I have one question for you.
Yes.
On your software, on these reports, would it allow you to kick out hours?
Total hours as far as?
Like, we have a volunteer team, and it'd be great to see how many hours they've volunteered into the community. So like, if they go on all these, you know, 267 calls, how many hours did our community just receive in volunteer firefighting? Would the software allow that?
We know with, I'm not sure. We've actually went to a different program over this last year. They've upgraded it, and Brad does the fire reports, and he is still learning some of the
Yeah, I'm not a computer whiz.
I'd rather you be a firefighter. Thank you.
That's more Jason's forte than that.
Okay.
I'm going to say that I'm sure that it is possible. And the one thing this doesn't show is things that we do just outside of this. I mean, Kids' Day.
Kids' Day, yeah.
You know, the guys go up, they help out.
Right, right.
Get that tent up. This coming Saturday, we're going to be at Washington and Pence because the PTA called and they'd like to hose down all the playground areas so they could do some painting on it. So those things, too, that's what we tell the guys when we hire them. It's not just about, you know, putting out fires, but there's a lot of community-oriented stuff that goes into this as well, so.
Great. Chief, any comments? I'm sorry, Katie, just something.
Nope, that's cool.
Any comments on the condition of your vehicles and building that you'd like the counsel to know?
We've got good equipment. We do have a truck that we are looking at, you know, getting replaced here in a few years. The building is a 1971 or '72 that used to house the PD and the fire department. Now it's ours. Our building maintenance budget, you know, goes up a little bit each year just because we've replaced a couple of furnaces over the past couple of years. I think we've got one left to replace. But, you know, we're, it's tight in there.
Okay.
Definitely tight.
Okay. Any other questions, counsel, for Chief Vaughn at this time? If not, entertain a motion to accept the fire chief's annual report.
Moved to approve.
Moved by Rasmussen.
Second.
Second by Gandy. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign. Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate you coming tonight, too. The next counsel will move to our resolution action items and ordinances. And the first is the consideration of dedication of sanitary sewer in the reef addition for the city of Fairfield, and that is the newly annexed area for the new industrial park area. And is there anyone that is going to speak to that, Melanie? Can you give us the essentials?
So the sewer was built a year and a half ago. It was designed by French Reniker, built by Drish Construction. The city crews have televised it to indicate that it's in good shape, not to mention that there was observation during construction. So we feel fine adding it to the city's system and maintaining it.
Okay, so this is essentially an acceptance of the easement and the completion of the sewer?
Yes, yeah, accepting the sewer. And then I don't have it in front of me, but I believe it's a 30-foot easement that goes along with the sewer. 40. Thanks, Josh.
Okay. Great. Thank you. So counsel, entertain a motion then to accept the dedication of the sanitary sewer?
So moved.
Moved by Gandy.
Second.
Second by Anderson. Any discussion? Not all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign. Motion carries. Your next item, counsel, will be postponed. We don't have anything for you this evening on the services agreement with JCG, so we'll probably bring that back at our next meeting. Next, we'll move to purchase agreement for irrigation with Fairfield Golf and Country Club, and then following that, the Walton Club. And Aaron, I ask you to give the background on this. I know we've, we did approve an agreement with the country club, but we're coming back and resetting it on a base rate?
Yeah, the, initially, what we approved was a cost per 1,000 gallons of water. After negotiating a little bit more with the country club and with Walton, and that would have been a fairly astronomical, not necessarily an astronomical number, but a fairly large number for them to bite off. So we negotiated more to a flat rate of $3,000, which was a little bit more amicable for them and for, and it's still agreeable with both Sean and Steve at this point. So we changed the rate, Jared, just to make that a little bit easier for both country club, for both golf courses to handle.
Okay. So counsel, any questions regarding that agreement? Okay, so we'll take the first one, then. That would be approval of a purchase agreement for irrigation with the Fairfield Golf and Country Club at a rate of $3,000 annually.
Moved to approve.
Moved by Anderson. I'm sorry, moved by Rasmussen. Second by Thompson. Any discussion? Not all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign? Motion approved. And then the purchase agreement then for irrigation with the Walton Club. Entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Moved by Gandy.
Second.
Second by Flornoy. Any discussion? Not all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign? Motion passes. And next, counsel, we're going to have a discussion about contracting with the University of Iowa for our off-duty police officers for home games. And I think we're going to have both Chief Thomas to speak about that, and then our city administrator give us the background on this opportunity.
Definitely answer question. Mr. Howley and I were, Mr. Howley was good enough to call me before and get a lot of the details. We do, several years ago, we set up a program because several private entities were contacting us, everything from organizations at the Civic Center to Walmart, requesting extra police officers. We talked to our insurance company, the retirement, and it was strongly recommended at the time that we not let the officers just take money and worry about the taxes themselves. There's not only a federal tax issue that we worry about. We want to make sure we're definitely doing it correctly. Retirement became kind of upset. They have roles. And we talked with Tom Gammerath about the liability aspects of it for the workman's comp. And it's just clear to find if, so several years ago, we set up a program that if you're requesting officers extra other than what we provide, a private company, they need to let us know in advance. Then we put it out to our officers so we can decide which officer is actually available to work and can work it. And then we contact the private entity back and let them know what the overtime rate for that officer is. The, and I don't know right or wrong, we, the officers came to us. They're interested in making a little extra money. There was some connection to the University of Iowa. I'm not even sure it was Officer Miller is the one that requested it through us. And right or wrong, I treated it like a private entity just to make sure it was kind of clearer for you folks instead of treating it as another law enforcement agency requesting for assistance, especially in an emergency or such as when we do with RagBri. It just seemed to be a little clearer because we want to make sure we came in front of you folks, answered any questions because we want to make sure we're transparent. But I'm definitely happy to answer any questions that you might have. I think Mr. Howley and Mr. Quaker prepared me completely for the questions that might come up.
So just to clarify, we would be allowing an officer with a city vehicle to attend a home game and help with the law enforcement for that period of time. So it might be an eight- or nine-hour day. I know one of the questions that we discussed that the public safety, not, I mean, the
Personnel.
Personnel committee discussed when looking at this was stretching resources, personnel resources of officers, you know, given the size of the force right now and the fact that we are still continuing to hire. And then also burnout, for lack of a better term, for some of the officers who might be involved with that, who would have duty the next day, that type of thing.
Yeah, that is a great question. I was glad because we had addressed that before requests have to be approved by a lieutenant in charge of the schedule. I don't want to bring up negative things, but we actually had a program before they had that terrible incident where, in Dallas, Texas, where the officer worked her shift and then worked an extra-duty shift. And the department didn't really know what extra-duty shifts they're working. She was exhausted. She went home, and there was, she went in her own apartment and shot and killed somebody. The good news is, we had already addressed that. We had told our officers upfront that not only will we approve it just because, we tell them upfront, we're not just approving it because you have a day off. We also look at what does it take to give you a replace? Is it too short a notice? That somebody else will be exhausted. And we also look at if it's, when you're a weekend at work, you're also, you have to be available in a moment's notice for an emergency so we can pull them off, the extra. So we've addressed, quite frankly, on this, there won't be a lot of officers available because it's going to be on the weekend. There's not a lot of officers off for the weekend. And I don't think there's going to be very many officers that actually want to partake in it because you do get a weekend off. You probably don't want to go to the Hawkeye game. Maybe they do, but, and do eight hours of the work they do. But it's an opportunity, but I'm not going to be upset either way.
So we know the city of Washington contracts, we think the city of Cedar Rapids contracts with them to do this, and they've done it for some times. We've done some back research on that. Are, it's not set, there are, what, six home games for the Hawkeyes? And if you have a preseason game, it might be seven. Then, but we're not necessarily talking about seven times a year. Or is that our understanding? Or is it's not necessarily that you're called for every game?
Definitely. And the good news is
So it may just be two or three or four times.
The agreement also specifies in there, if we decide to send them, they fall under University of Iowa's chain of command. But up till that point, when they leave, they're under our chain of command. So at any point, it says, "We don't have to send anybody if our department decides." One, everybody's tired, or two, we just don't have personnel. They want to know at least two weeks in advance, but they do understand, like any other law enforcement agency, that some emergencies are going to come up.
Okay.
And we might not be able to get the ones we promised up there.
Okay. How do you feel about it, Chief?
Aaron and I have talked it for a long time. It's one of those things that ultimately what it comes down to is we've kind of spent a lot of time on little headaches, but it's a payroll headache. It's making sure we get paid back for their retirement. But it's worth the little bit of a hassle that we've had to go through just to give them another opportunity to make a little bit more overtime where the taxpayers don't have to pay for it in Fairfield. If this overtime will be reimbursed to the University of Iowa, plus the officers, then a couple of them want to go up there and do it. It's a year-by-year basis, so next year, they might say, "No, it was just too much work. I got stuck on a traffic detail. I'm just not interested in going up there again." So it gives them a little added benefit to get a little more money.
And the $55 an hour covers all of our expenses?
Yes, sir. Almost all of it. There are some that the department would have to, such as travel up there. But it's the same cost that we pay when we send people to Des Moines for training, which we regularly have to do. It's a lot, will be a lot cheaper to go to Iowa City than it is to Des Moines. It's something that we do for RagBri when, you know, the officers came here to assist us. If we send officers there, we pay workman's comp. But we want to make sure upfront, the most important thing is, and Mr. Howley and I have talked about it, that we're reimbursed for their retirement. And the insurance we pay, so they understand upfront that it's not going to be $55. We haven't got them a set total yet. It'll be around $45 that they're actually getting. So the taxpayers here
Oh, you mean the officer?
Yes, sir.
Right. The expenses will be taken out of the 55, and then the officer gets it right after that?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. They're actually still benefiting from it because it's going into their retirement. But we want to make sure it's covered by that expense. They won't be getting that in cash.
How do you feel about the extra mileage and the deer population between here and Iowa City putting a squad car out of commission for the days they work?
It's something we do quite regularly to help other agencies, like I said, with RagBri and emergencies, we're always sending officers. And we're doing investigations a lot of time that, I have officers telling me they're going to Fort Madison because one of our burglars was over there, and they have a good. So it's something that we do quite regularly. You know, we try to limit it, but law enforcement has become Iowa-wide, I guess is the best way.
Chief, when did, when did this idea come to the, come to the officers? When did they start talking about it?
Probably two to three weeks ago.
And is it a decision that we have to make shortly in order to be able to, for the officers to be eligible for this season?
Yes. That's the only thing that kind of stinks is, we signed the agreement because there was a lot of "we may," but we, they knew upfront we'd have to get counsel approval, or at least let counsel know. The only hurry is now, the University of Iowa wants to know two weeks before the first home game, and it's in, what did you say?
31st, I think, yes.
Three weeks.
So this is a decision made for this entire season?
But know upfront that if later on, we cannot, you know, and that's why I told Officer Miller, we're going to set all this up with May, but in another week, we now will know which officer, we know one's going to the academy. We know one is just coming off field training. We know several officers are exhausted. So him and I are going to sit down with the lieutenant of patrol and figure out. Just because we say we're going to do it doesn't mean we're actually going to do it this time. We might have to tell them, "Council approved it. We just can't get anybody up there."
So are we confident that if something goes wrong, the city is not going to be exposed? Do we have, are we confident that the liability is going to be contained?
Correct. Their only requirement is we let them know two weeks before the game so they can plan because the University of Iowa officer, they have 28 agencies that are helping them out. And usually, it's about 10 to 15 agencies can be there. Sometimes it's this agency, sometimes it's that agency.
I mean, from the point of view of the city?
We will be exposed, won't we? Because our insurance is going to cover every, every activity the officer's engaged in.
Yeah.
So we are totally exposed.
We're totally covered?
Yeah, but we're exposed to all the liability through our insurance.
It falls on us.
We're, okay, we're, we're covered by our, our insurance is going to cover all this activity?
Yes, yeah. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Anytime we're asked to, you know, when Fairfest asks, can we have extra officers? We increase liability. That's, like I said, I discussed it with Tom Gammerath. It's a lot clearer now because they're still employees. They are insured, but we tell the people that are paying for the overtime, you're not buying an officer. You're not in charge of that officer. And most of them understand that upfront. They're only allowed to do law enforcement activities, so our insurance won't cover them under workman's comp if they're lifting a box for you to help out and they hurt their back because that's not law enforcement. If they get in a fight with trying to arrest somebody. And the other part of it is, we tell them upfront, most of the, you know, Ruston and Hy-Vee and Walmart and everybody else that I talk to understands they're still under our chain of command. They're still police officers, so if there's an emergency, pull them out. If they don't feel comfortable, that's in their scope of duty. They, if you're saying, you know, making arrests, and they say, "I'm not going to make the arrest," they get to make that decision, and we still go through our chain of command. There's still police officers, and that's the way the insurance company wants it. It's a lot clearer to find that they're still working as police. It's just being reimbursed for the overtime through a private entity.
But once they're on duty up there, they're under the chain of command of Iowa City?
Yes, sir. Like they would be when the RagBri is
They were in Washington.
When all the officers from Centerville and every other place came here, they fell then under our chain of command once they got here.
Right.
It was still their liability, and it's something that our national, the other thing, the other part of it is, our insurance is ICAP, which is the University of Iowa's insurance. And they understand, they cover government. They understand we help each other out with RagBri. But they need to know that we all have to make them aware of this because they'll have to start another folder. It's been approved, but we're increasing liability because we're having officers go up there when they wouldn't normally be up there. That's true, sir. Tough decision.
Well, we just did a salary adjustments a few, a little while ago. I was hoping no one would be interested in this kind of work. We did that. I guess not.
Maybe for retainment, for recruitment, for morale, it may be some plus for some of the officers to have an opportunity to police a Hawkeye football game. There's some plus there. As long as the city on the, the city is fully protected, we're not at risk. You talk about, I think you were describing the situation that happened in Dallas. Horrific. As long as we're protected, and that's not likely to happen here, it seems like, why wouldn't we give the officers the opportunity?
And that's exactly right. And that's exactly where I was at, sir. It's a little extra work for Denise and Aaron and I, but if they're, if it helps a little bit with morale, it's worth it.
Okay. Well, I think, Chief, you have expressed that you'll be, if it's approved, you'll be cautious in what you commit to this year, particularly in the first year. So, if council would like to make a motion to approve the agreement for 2019-2020, give it a try anyway.
So moved?
Moved by Gandy, second by Flornoy. Any other discussion?
I just, I would ask if, this is a one-year contract, so if we were to renew it next year, you could give us an update on how things went this year in January with your-
Definitely. And that was their requirement, too. It has to be renewed every year. It's only good for one year, sir.
Okay. Any other discussion? Not please call the roll.
Gandy?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Haly?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
I want a better parking spot.
You can ride up with them. They'll get right up front.
Sounds good to me.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
To Hill?
Yes.
We won't report you to the ethics board, Tom. Thought hadn't even crossed my-
Better parking space.
All right. We'll move on then to an ordinance. This will be our first reading. I think this came out of public safety, and this is to better clarify signage and street naming and street sign placement. Michael, could you give us some background on this, please?
Sure. So, a number of private property owners were installing, or have installed signage around town that looks identical to city signage. And we're concerned that if somebody were calling for an emergency and referred to the sign, it's not in our system, and our EMS would not be able to find the location. So, I think, Aaron, you found some comparable ordinances from other cities. And the simplest solution is to keep the green background, white lettering to city signs only. And if private property owners want to install their own signs on their own property, they can do so at any other color scheme than the city sign. So, there could, should take care of the problem and avoid any confusion. So, that's essentially what this ordinance says.
Okay. Counsel, any questions? So, I'll open the public hearing at this time and ask if there is any comment on the first reading of this sign ordinance. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and ask for a motion to pass from the first to the second reading.
So moved. Second?
Moved by Flornoy, second by Haly. Any discussion? Not please call the roll.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Haly?
Yes.
To Hill?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Thank you. Next, we have two dates to set. First one would be a public hearing for information on the South Main Street Highway One corridor improvements. That'll be August 20th here at City Hall, 5:00 p.m. So, entertain a motion to set that date, 5:30. What did I say? 5:30.
So moved.
Yeah. Moved by Flornoy, second by Anderson. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign. Thank you. And then, following that, we'll have a council workshop and public meeting for the presentation of those findings on Monday, October 21st. Is, do we know, is that a council meeting?
No, it's not.
It's not. So, why don't we set the same time, 5:30 p.m. for that meeting as well. So, entertain a motion to set the workshop and public meeting.
Moved to approve.
Moved by Rasmussen.
Second.
Second by Gandy. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign. Thank you. Counsel, my report is to mention, you did see coverage on the redesignation that Fairfield received as an Iowa Great Place. We prepared an application during the winter and submitted it early spring. All cities that had received a designation prior to 2014 were required to apply for a redesignation. So, we did that. And they also asked us to narrow our focus for the designated area. At the first, first time we received the award, we really included many elements within Jefferson County and also throughout Fairfield. But this application was targeted mostly towards the downtown. What that does is, it does open up opportunities for us with grants. We have submitted a pre-application for grants that would support art and lighting in the alleys, as came out of our wayfinding exercise a couple of years ago, and recommendations, and also for the west signage, and also for downtown wayfinding signs. So, that will probably be coming to the council before next year's lost allocations for some funds towards some of those projects. If we can get some grant support through Iowa Great Places, I think we'll get a lot accomplished next year. That's all I have. We'll move to our committee and board reports. Ways and Means Committee, Tom.
Ways and Means met last Monday, August 5th, with the library director and the chief of six of the library board members to discuss the, there's roughly $163,000 that is a non-budgeted expense for chiller and the controls. And we talked about, you know, having to, how to finance that, and also the need for better budgeting practices. But also, then, the bid specs will be developed by the city engineer, and with the winter anticipation for installation.
Okay. What is their timeline, Tom, on that replacement?
Well, again, it hasn't, it's, it hasn't totally failed. So, you know, we talked about whether or not could we make it go another year, another two. But, you know, the idea of having a 105-degree day with the air conditioner didn't work. So, we're trying to do it so that the installation would be, happen during the winter.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Next, a report from the Personnel Committee.
The Personnel Committee met last Friday, August 9th, at 12:30, and all three members are present, along with the mayor and the city administrator. And we discussed the contract in front of you from Gov. HR to do a classification study on the compensation. And the highlight of this is that the community of Keokuk is interested in doing a similar study. They're looking for a little bit more information than we are, so there are some of the expenses that are going to be specifically allocated to them. But by partnering together, we're hoping to split the cost more or less in half, right, Aaron?
Actually, a little bit more. Our, our cost will be somewhere around $6,500, where they're going to be spending, it's $23,000 total, so they're going to spend $12,000 or $13,000.
Yep. So, in discussions, we did ask that, we looked into their qualifications and talked to their references. And then, we also were interested in what the shelf life of this was. And then, we also wanted to add to the, the study, doing a side-by-side comparison in their work of quantity of employees per department. So, not only do we care about the wages they're making in the department, but if this other comparable department has 12 employees and we have nine, that, we feel, we feel that's an important aspect of the comparison. So, the committee is behind this, and we approved bringing it to council tonight to proceed with.
Just to follow up, I did, I didn't try to make contact with all three of their references. I received one call back, which had glowing results. The other two, I do admit, I called late this afternoon because I had a very, rather busy day today. But I did also talk to Cole to see if he had contacted any of their references. He did not, but he has worked with Gov. HR before, or HR Gov. And, and he had very good response and reaction to working with them again. So, he's comfortable working with them. So, I feel pretty comfortable working with this organization also.
And then, we had also, the mayor had mentioned, this has been done, but at least five or longer years ago.
It's longer. It's probably, like, 10 years. And I think the wage studies are important, you know, to really get a snapshot of kind of where you are. Otherwise, you tend to be dealing with one department at a time, and some can get behind. So, I think having a document that you can point to and plan with for your budgeting is a useful tool.
Yep. So, we were hoping for a three-to-five-year shelf life out of this. And if it's been 10 years, we kind of feel like the time has come to do it again. And we are to the point where we're dealing with the compensation on a department-by-department basis now. So, the time has come.
One question. Where is the $6,500 coming from?
This will come out of city, or administration budget, out of the city office.
And we'll be, and we'll go through a budget amendment. It'll be, it'll be added to the budget later. We'll be, Rebecca, do you know when we will do our next budget amendment? We have, towards the end of the year, I think we talked about.
Talked about doing it in December.
Right. Okay. So, we would have something before the end of the year, that this would be included in budget amendment. So, Katie, would you make a motion then to-
I'd make a motion that we engage with Gov. HR and the community of Keokuk in a compensation classification study.
Okay. Moved by Anderson.
Second.
Second by Rasmussen. Any other questions or discussion? Please call the roll.
Anderson?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Haly?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
To Hill?
Yes.
Thank you. And Aaron, you expect they'll get started fairly quickly because Keokuk is ready to go, and it might be-
Correct.
Two to four months?
Cole and I will have to get together to make sure that we have the comparable cities appropriate for what we do. We don't want to have metro cities or cities that have far outreached us as far as taxable evaluation and stuff. We want to make this as comparable as possible. So, Cole and I will have to sit down and kind of make some of those parameters for this before we get too far going. But it's about a 15, is that 15-week process?
120 days.
120 days.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Next, a report from the Environmental and Franchise Utilities Committee.
Yes. We met tonight at 6:30 to consider two items. The first one was movement of resolution 3719 from into the ordinance stage. And we discussed the resolution and adopted it as is, except for one item. On page seven, on April 12th, when we adopted this resolution, we made a change of the distance between two poles that could be erected that are new poles, from 500 to 1,000 feet. Tonight, the committee recommended moving that back to 500 feet, and then otherwise unchanged. So-
Okay. So, then, so then you're, and again, just to explain the reason why it's going back.
Well, there was no good reason to put it there to 1,000 in the first place, for one thing. The other reason is-
They'd be ineffective at 1,000.
What's that?
They'd be ineffective.
Well, that's the point. So, they're ineffective as a technology.
Right.
It has to be 500 feet.
Right.
Maximum, I think.
Okay. And is your committee's intention to just allow this to just continue to serve as our means of dealing with those applications as they come?
As of now, yes.
If they come?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. So, then, entertain a motion to approve the change language.
There'll be a-
Or is something going to come?
There'll be a-
Because it is an ordinance, so there'll be amendments. Okay.
Right.
Okay. Anything else, Doug?
Yeah. There was one other issue. We all got, received an email from Catherine Saranduk about the AMA's recommendation on LED lighting for city streets. You may have received that a few weeks ago, if you recall. Anyway, she brought to my attention, to our attention, that the AMA had made a recommendation in 2016 to restrict LED lighting in city streets. Now, the lights are rated in a unit called Ks, 4,000K, 3,000K, or 5,000K. And the AMA had recommended no more than 3,000K. But the, and the reason they did that was because the 4,000K lights have a stronger blue component than the 3,000K lights do. And a blue component can contribute, they claim, to disease issues, glare, other, other problems with typically, typical blue light. So, I looked up the Illuminating Engineering Society's position on this, and their position was that the science that the AMA was using was not sound enough. And there were a lot of other issues that should have been concerned, considered before, other than just the blue light. In any case, I ended up calling Tim-
Wizer.
Wizer at Alliant. He's handling our installation of the downtown lights. Of course, we already have a contract in place, and before, the lights have already been ordered, and they happen to be 4,000K light. And-
Which, Doug? The head replacements or the new-
All the LEDs are going to be 4,000K.
Okay.
He told me, let's see if I can find it here. So, the lights that are scheduled to be installed are rated at 4,000K. This is the customary and usual standard for street and sidewalk lighting, which is designed to optimize safety for vehicles and pedestrians. Shielding to minimize stray light from impacting nearby buildings will be put in place where needed. The contract with the city's already been signed. The lights have already been ordered. So, I took this up with committee. We decided not to take any action on it.
And you'll communicate back?
I did email Catherine Sudan. I emailed her. I gave her Tim's contact information. She was pleased with that. And she had complained about a light outside of her residence. It was bright. And Aaron went down, took a picture of that light, and she's taking that up with Alliant, I guess. So, I don't know if they're going to install more shielding on that particular light pole or not.
What percentage of lights are LED at this time?
I asked Tim that, and couldn't answer that question off the top of his head.
Because I don't think it's complete.
No, they're replacing them as the, in the condenses are going out.
Yeah.
They're replacing them.
What is the predominant that we're using? A halogen or?
I don't know. I just know they're rated at 4,000K. That was the issue. So, I didn't ask him, are there halogens or other kinds?
The others, yeah. It'd just be good to know what else we have, so that as these questions come up again.
Right.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you. Anything else, Doug?
No, that was all. Sorry.
All right. Thank you for your report. Next, Water and Sewer Utilities Committee.
Yes. Water and Sewer Utilities Committee met at 6 o'clock this evening. And we had two items to consider. One was, this is a second request that we received. We actually took action on some of it several months ago. But this one is for RNJ Investments, and they're asking us for a, asking for the difference of a refund for sewer charges of $2,257.75. And the committee at this time would like to recommend that the council would approve this. So, I would like to put it in the form of a motion for the council.
And this was a situation where water leaked and did not go into our sewer?
Yes. The water was leaking, and it's an, actually, it's a building that is not occupied. So, that has made it even more of a challenge. So, we would like to recommend that the council approve that.
Okay. Motion by Rasmussen to approve the refund.
Second.
Second by Gandy. Any discussion? Not all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign. Okay. Thank you. Anything else, Martha?
Yes. Probably, one that is even more important is that due to the expected completion date of the comprehensive plan and the expected completion date of the Libertyville Road sanitary sewer construction project, the committee would like to, at this point, make the following motion, that property owners that are along the Libertyville Road who have signed their paperwork be connected and to voluntarily be annexed by December the 15th, 2019. And they will be charged at the city rate for water and sewer, starting January 20th, 2020, January in 2020. But this would be our recommendation at this time regarding the people that have, as I say, signed and done their paperwork.
So, the signatures are required by December 15th this year. Annexation is forthcoming in the coming years.
Thanks, Michael. Yes.
Just making sure. We're not asking to annex by December.
And this isn't a surprise to anyone. This is essentially ordering the process to move forward.
Right. That's our goal.
And for us to begin that.
At least at this point. This is the beginning.
Right. Okay. So, we have a motion to approve the statement by the Water and Sewer Utilities Committee.
Second.
Second by Haly. Any discussion? Not please call the roll.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Haly?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
To Hill?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Now, we'll move to our administrative report. Aaron, anything to report tonight?
The one thing I'd like to point out is, in your consent agenda, you approved the-
Now we'll move to our administrative report. Aaron, anything to report tonight?